You know what, I took two things. I took the muscle relaxant and then I started taking it.
Well, like I said, I don't think he's helping enough, you know? But he pops right up.
Good evening, everyone. We'd ask you to please rise and open your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and join the board in a moment of silence as we honor our veterans, our first responders, and our active military. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. Tonight is a hearing night. We have two hearings on the docket. We're going to start with the first hearing, which is a local, a proposed local law. Mr. Rivera.
A proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limited, the limit established in general municipal law three dash C.
Okay, so this, we do this annually around this time, right before budget season. Essentially, we take a vote on counsel from NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors, to pierce the tax cap. It does not mean that we're going to pierce the tax cap. As a matter of fact, we have never pierced the tax cap since its imposition back in the early 2010s, I believe, 2011. But we have, in fact, passed this local law every year in case of an eventuality, an unforeseen circumstance where state aid is withheld, state aid is changed or is cut, and we do, in fact, have to pierce the tax cap. So this is essentially just a, an administrative local law, just to protect us if and when we have to pierce the tax cap. This year, the tax cap actually happens to be exactly 2%. And so I propose a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the 2%. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Gibbons?
No, that was well said, Mayor. I agree with everything you said, and it's ready for adoption.
Okay, and those of you who've been on the board for a number of years know that we essentially do this every year. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Sartori, seconded by Trustee Casado. Mr. Rivera, please poll the board.
Trustee, yes. Deputy Mayor Sartori.
Yes.
Trustee Casado.
Yes.
Trustee Soloski.
Yes.
Mayor Perera.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Budget hearings will be happening later this month, well, actually, beginning of next month, in April. So you can chime in. At that point, we'll have hearings and hearings and meetings regarding the, the budget. Thank you, everyone. And now our second hearing this evening.
Application of DP Builders, Inc. for a special permit, permit pursuant to chapter 550 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Mineola entitled zoning, section 550 dash 15.3 entitled Historic Overlay District, to construct a five-story mixed-use residential building with two levels of below-grade parking upon the property known as 101-109 Main Street, Mineola, New York, known and designated on the Nassau County Land and Tax Map as section nine, block 419, lots 229, 227, 223, 24, and 26.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe, affidavit of mailings? All right, thank you. Mr. Gibbons?
Yes, Nassau County Planning Commission has not acted on the application, so the board will not be able to vote it tonight. And I would ask for a resolution under SEQA declaring this an unlisted action.
I'll accept a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Soloski. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Sartori. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, motion carries. Okay, so as with all other hearings, we're going to invite the applicant or the representatives for the applicant to approach the podium and to, of course, identify yourself and your relationship to the applicant, at which point you'll make your presentation. The board will then interact with the applicant and their expert witnesses, and then we'll open it up to public comment. If there are any questions that are left for the applicant to answer, we ask you to come back and answer those questions. Mr. Walsh, you, you've done this once or twice before, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and trustees on the Village of Mineola, as well as the Mineola public and village staff. And thank you for the, giving us the additional esels. If you've been here before, when I do this, my pictures are always dropping down. So it's very helpful, and it should move the meeting along better. I am, for the record, I am Kevin Walsh from the firm Walsh, Marcus, McDougal, and DeBellas, 229 Seventh Street, Garden City, New York. I appear here for the applicant, who is DP Builders, Inc., the owner of the property and the applicant. I have with me here tonight applicant's developer or represent, representatives, David Eschakoff, and I have with me also Andrew Pecar. In addition to that, I have the professional staff, which would include architects, two architects who worked on this from Combined Resources, Sal Ferrara, who's been here before, and Noel Rogers, who has also been here before you, before. I also have from R and B, R and M Engineering, Chris Bisagnolo and Keenan Cody. Keenan did the traffic studies that you have, and Chris is here to talk about any of the other e-environmental assessment information. They are here to answer any questions you have, and they'll be used as needed. The board, I know you guys are always well-versed in an application and its reports, but I may not call them up unless there's questions that they would need to answer. But that'll be your decision when we get to that. So this is an application concerning the property at 97-109 Main Street in the village. It is in the heart of the downtown. You know it well. And before I begin, can I submit into the record a couple of documents, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay.
And while Mr. Walsh does that just for the public, this is the corner of Main Street and Second Street, the site where we had a fire about three and a half years ago, four years ago. So everyone is familiar with the, the site is on the southwest corner of, correct? Northwest.
Northwest corner.
Of Second Street and, and Main Street.
So Mayor, the first document is my letter. It's the original of my letter. It is no, no different than what I emailed to Liam and the, and the village attorney earlier. So there's no changes in it. I just wanted the original in the record. The second set of documents are photographs, and Mr. Ferrara will be talking a little bit about them. You have not seen them, but he, as he describes how he envisioned this building and how he tried to pick up the surrounding areas, he wanted you to have reference to those. So when he comes up and testifies, that might help you understand better his perspective. And Mayor, you, you mentioned it, but it's true. If you look at the radius map, and it's a small, this, this property is at the northwest corner of, of the, of, I will call it the most important intersection, but it's tied with a couple of others within the village, and it encompasses, this site encompasses almost a quarter of that entire block. But for one area in between, which is, you know it as the locksmith. Okay, so this application has been a challenge for a number of reasons. It's taken a long time to get here. A lot of that had to do with some of the difficulties with the site, in developing the site, one of which was, and it, it is, we could not bring the locksmith property into the equation for the development. So that required some expertise, some extra study, some, some internal determinations of how we could construct what we want to construct, and then respect the locksmith's property, which is still on that. So I think we've done that. I think we've worked hard to do that. I know that the village has been more than patient to get something on the board for this property. This client intends, if it gets approval, to build, do it in, with quality, and maintain this building as an, as one of the most important components of the downtown area. So that's the radius map that shows everybody where we're located. And now I think, I'd like to just give you an orientation of this building and what we tried to accomplish. So this is an application under your statute in the historic district. We, underlying district is the B, the business two district, but we are also in the historic district, and we know how important that is. That sets forth some additional items we have to respect and try to accommodate. We hope we've done that when you hear this application. This is a, it is a five-story building with amenity space on the top of the fifth floor. And it, so obviously, from one perspective, it's six floors. I'm not trying to pretend it's not. But we've done our best to accommodate what in your world and what you've tried to accomplish with your statute is to minimize the impact of the height of these buildings. We, we've done it in a number of ways, and I think if I set forth how we did it in the building, it might help, and you can get an orientation of what we were faced with in doing it. So I've, I've pulled up, you have these drawings, but if you could look at, this is, it's, it's, your drawing number R110, which is really an elevation from Second Street, looking at the proposed building. And then against that is also the ground floor site plan. So I think, looking at these two drawings together, it helped me figure out exactly what's going on here. So you'll see various heights from the, in the rendering, the color rendering, which is R110. If you separate the building into a bunch of components, you see that the corner, the corner of the property is one block. And on the site plan, you'll see the corner is in blue here, or it's, I'm sorry, the, the floor plan, the, the corner is in blue here. And that height, that portion of the building has its own height, and it is, it is retail stores in the front over stories of residential units. So stories above that, two through four, are two, three, and four. Three floors of residential units are above that. So the, we tried to keep the height of that corner to be something that would be consistent with what you'd like to see in the historic district in terms of height. And I think we've been able to do that. In fact, there's a drawing, one of the drawings in your packet of documents, the elevation drawing showing the heights of the various stages of this, actually shows someone standing across the street and a sight line showing that from across the street at that intersection, you cannot see anything above that. We've got a peek on it, but you can't see anything above it. That height is 46 feet. So just to let you know what that is, it's 46 feet in that corner. A little higher than I know that you generally like to see, but we're able to accomplish and, and basically protect the visual from that corner, the rest of the building, from the visual on the street at that, at that, at that location. So that portion of that. If you then move down Second Street towards Mineola Boulevard, it's one story. It's the locksmith, and you can see it on both these. It's the locksmith. And then it is a, a good-looking restaurant that's set back from the street. So we plan on constructing a restaurant of sorts in here, a food place, and then there'll be an opening or an area in the front, which is part of this application, which is, runs the length of that front and goes 20-something feet into it. And that'll be open space, and we will keep that as, the plan is now to keep that as open space. And so the bulk of the building, then, is actually, as it relates to Second Street, is set way back from Second Street. So the distance from the street to when you get back to my building, I've got one-story buildings here, and then, as you can see in the rendering, I have a buildings, I have a building behind it. That is about 65 feet to the start of that building. So while on the one corner, we've been able to hide completely the elevation above the 46 feet, in this area here, we can't, because we need to get the height, and it needs to be there, but we've set the building back 65 feet. So it's not imposing on the street, on the street at all. And we put in front of it, we have a locksmith there that's in front of it, that's not us, but he's, he's remaining there, and then we have our restaurant there. So the hope is that by, by designing it this way, which is not cheap, but inexpensive, we've been able to accommodate your concerns, which we fully respect and understand, for this historic district area. Mr. Ferrara will discuss the architectural elements of the building when he, when he speaks. This is basically, as I said, it's a, it's a five-story building in sorts, but it starts out at three stories. And then it's 62 units, 62 residential units above three retail units. The three are two are in the corner, in that first area I described, and then this restaurant is the third retail establishment. The setbacks I discussed for the fifth and sixth floor. The idea here, obviously, from the developer's point of view, is to do two things. One is to accommodate what the village's vision is for this area, but at the same time, create a yield that can make this a viable building that they know that they can develop, and they know they can make some money on, so it'll keep it maintained and up-to-date. So we think we have that, we've reached that balance on our end, and we're hoping we've reached it on your end. At the, just so this, there is a sixth floor in the back, and as I referenced, that is just amenity space. We need amenity space in the building. It's all been moved to that area in the sixth floor. So one of your drawings has the floor plan for the sixth floor. It will show a gym, some lockers, and that type of thing up there. A community room for the use of our residents in the building. There will be two levels of parking below grade, where we are, I'm fully aware of what your parking requirement is in the historic district. If we get the approval, we've produced 80, 85 spaces below grade on the site. If you do the calculation for what the historic district, if you grant approval in the historic district, you, you like to see one and a quarter spaces per unit, and then the commercial is one per 400 square feet. The combination of the two, if you read the, the report and look at it, the combination would be 96 spaces. So we are short, not a lot of spaces, we are short some, and we plan on, we, in my incentive letter is a request that we be permitted to purchase the additional spaces as part of the parking fund in the village. You can hear from Mr. Cody later. We don't believe, this is a TOD, this is a transit-oriented development. We realize you've already relaxed somewhat the parking requirement in a historic district. But even at one and a quarter, with the municipal availability that's in the area, that will be in the area, we feel that we're, we're, we're well-parked here. In addition, you know, this is the type of building that traffic and parking is all, all through the day, because most of it is a residential building. It is not, its peak hours aren't what a business would be there. And any use here has to be measured against other uses that would be here. This is an important site in the village. Something will be here. We think that we've got the best thing that can be here, but there's going to be impacts associated with parking and traffic regardless. Mr. Cody, who actually can speak for himself, but I'll wait for some questions for him. He would, he would conclude, basically, what his report concludes, that at the study points for traffic, we have a, a service level of A. A is the best, you have that now. It may not seem to people always when you're driving down there that you have an A service at these locations, but you do have, for level of service, you do. And if you know, because I know I've been down there enough to try and figure it out, you do move through there, but there's, there's stop signs. It's a short run from the, the Main Street on Mineola Boulevard to Main Street. And so therefore, traffic and properly is moving very slowly across there. I wouldn't think this would be a location you'd want to see cars moving at 30 miles an hour, uninterrupted through that area. There is too much in your downtown going on in those streets. That's what you're, that's good, because you have people that are using the establishments over the way, and hopefully, we will add to that with our retail uses and our residence, increasing the residence there. But as I said, Mr. Cody can speak to any further issues you have on that or want to have further answers on questions to that. Water and sewer, we've studied that before. You've studied it before. The report in front of you that was done by R and M, it indicates that there is sufficient water and for sanitary and for water. The data that was used for the report is the same data you get in all the reports, because it's based on the Nassau County estimates. You know, I think, and we've helped show you, that based on actual uses by the village of these multiple dwelling units, you're using far less water than are predicated on the estimates by Nassau County. And that, that's easily explainable. They haven't updated those flow estimates for a long, long time. Fixtures and equipment, all things that generate water usage have gotten much more efficient over the years, but they, they haven't necessarily found their way to the county estimates. As a baseline, in worst-case scenario, you can use them, but we think, for instance, in that report, I think it indicates the estimated water usage would be about 14,000 gallons per day, based upon the combination of the residential use and the commercial use. But if you do the, the, the actual data that you have from a bunch of the other buildings, meaning Morgan Park, One Third, you would find that the actual water usage is 100 gallons per unit, per day, and those are for relatively fully occupied buildings. And when I say that, I don't mean 90%. I mean 98% occupied. And that would generate, if you use that data here, it would be about 6,900 or 6,500 gallons per day. Doesn't mean a lot to me, other than it's much less than is forecast in Nassau County. Schoolchildren, we've been here many times talking about that, and I think we all know now that we're not going to generate a lot of schoolchildren. The, the report done by R and M would confirm that. It's something you already know. And when measured against the tax revenue, buildings like this are actually good for the downtown and ultimately good for the municipality. I, I always argue, and I maintain, and I think it's come, it's true. I didn't, I didn't originate this argument. I've studied it with people who have taught me, or I, I learned from, I think, that these are the types of projects that actually help our tax base within the village. So setting aside for a moment the village's taxes, which aren't even an issue here. We, this part of this application and in our incentive letter, we pay full village taxes, whatever you assess, and whatever the tax rate is, we pay those no matter what. So this is really a talk about school and county taxes. And the school taxes are very important, because they virtually overlap your village to a great extent. I think a year ago, for my last project, I think I was here explaining that the pilot programs that are in place that support the school through these developments, they're, they're in their third and fourth and fifth years now. There's, and, and they're an escalating amount per year for the most part. So they're starting to generate some truly significant tax revenue for the schools that increases every year, virtually every year. And so you've, you've, you know, in year one, if the taxes for the school were very, very low because of the scale, you could make an argument that, you know, we're, we're paying for some kids, and maybe you don't cover it in your building. Can't make that argument anymore. Once these, once these buildings get in the pipeline, they become annuities to school districts, because the, the number of students doesn't change. It's the same on the first day you put, you open up to the fifth year, but the revenue does significantly, and that's by nature. So I think it's probably why the school districts aren't as vocal as they once were on these projects, because I think that they're recognizing that these are actually used, these actually help keep the residential tax burden down, because it's another source, or an additional source of increased revenue to the schools every year. So that study is also in the report done by R and M. If you have any further questions, we'll be happy to answer that. So if I just, before I turn it over to Mr. Ferrara, I just want to conclude, at least this part, by indicating what the incentive letter is. So in, in the request to give us, we need two real forms of relief. Height is the biggest form of relief we need, and it is, I'm not suggesting it's not above what you, what your normal proposal or request is in the historic district. But we are asking to get the approval for this building, because we feel it's a good balance between what can make a, a successful building here at the expense it's going to be, and what's good for our client to make some money on it and have revenue on it, and also maintain it well, which is as important as anything else, against what the village's objectives are. But we're also, obviously, it's, it's kind of understood, but it's in the incentive letter. We will do full streetscape, and it's a, it's a huge, it, we have a, we have a lot of frontage, so we're going to do a full streetscape along Main Street and Second for our property. Along Main Street, there are some utility lines. We will bury them and take them off the, which I think is terrific for this village to get the downtown, get rid of that stuff, because the buildings are a lot nicer to look at than those things. We have seven affordable housing units, which is 10% of the 62. We round that up to be seven units of affordable housing. And we're going to, we are offering an incentive payment to the village of $620,000, which is what I think you might accept as, as an incentive to, to give us the additional zoning needed and the latitude needed to build this building. And there's a parking fund contribution based on the rates that you've had are, is about $22,000. So that's the presentation. I'll answer any questions now, or usually you want to hear everything, or you want to start with questions now. It's up to you, Mayor.
I will hear from Mr. Ferrara.
Okay. Mr. Ferrara? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, uh, good morning. Good evening, everybody, Mayor, everybody. He does a great job, doesn't he?
He does, he does.
Our, our job here was really a very complicated building for what we normally do for these type of buildings.
Mr. Ferrara, I'm sorry, just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Salvatore Ferrara, President of Combined Resources, Inc., 155 First Street, Mineola, New York.
Thank you.
Our office is actually just on the corner of this. We know the site very well. We walk by it every day. And our job here was to create a downtown building, not just any building, but something that fit the downtown character, and to actually enhance the character of that downtown. It was an incredibly difficult site because of the locksmith trying to work around it. So we had many goals that we were trying to fit into and to try and capture, and also create this environment for this downtown. Our, our goal here was to try and get as much of the retail onto the Second Street area and onto the corner of, as it turns onto Main Street. We felt it was important to keep the traffic as much as possible a little bit further to the north on Main Street, so that it became more of a public way as compared to a traffic way. Ourselves being on the, on the next block, we all come through First Street, for the most part, coming down to get to this site in our building. We see most of the traffic on First Street going into the parking garage that's behind 120 Mineola Boulevard. So we find that the cross street of First is really where a lot of the traffic comes. First Street goes all the way down to Herricks, and goes all the way across to Willis, and that's why that street gathers most of the traffic, in our opinion. So as we laid out the building, our, our concept of having Second Street, which obviously has a good deal of the retail on it now, the St. James is there, the delis are there. There are a couple of nice shops on that block to keep as much of the retail and the restaurant uses on that side of the street. Having the entranceways into the parking garages along Main Street then became important, because now that pushes the traffic over there. Conversations about closing Second Street and using it as a public way for, for special events or promenades, those type of things now become much more available, because it doesn't affect how the traffic actually flows. You still have that, that ability to run those off on Main Street and not affect what you're doing on Second Street. The concept that we did, again, it was such a crazy site, was to try and get some of the parking on-grade, so that that could be used for some of the retail. So when you come in on this particular drive, you are on-grade, and we have a series of parking spots here, and a walkway that comes between the building, and entrances, obviously, would be led to the back of the other retail building. So this kind of becomes an off-street way of parking for the retail at, you know, certain hours during the day. And we felt that was important, because the parking close for retail sometimes is much more important than, than anything else, and that gave us a little bit of ability to do that. The building entrance itself is off of Main Street here. We have a vertical connection that goes up the building, and the building is kind of a, a U shape, coming around from Second Street, going across Main, and then coming down the north end of the property, and then returning back to the south to where we have the larger retail, which we presume would be the main restaurant space. Not that these couldn't be restaurant spaces. We did afford them with basements, because restaurants need storage, they need prep areas. So we felt all of that was important to incorporate now and not come back later on for. We could have added in those extra couple of parking spots, but sooner or later, we felt that that need would be there, and we would have to come back and take them away. So we took them out now, knowing that the building, in order to fulfill its needs, would need that space in the first level. This goes down, and it's actually a, what we would call a tilted plane parking garage. So it's kind of like what you have in the main parking garage at 120, where you drive up, and the ramp itself is actually the parking levels. This comes and it circles down and circles down again. So it is, it is two levels, literally below-grade of parking and one level on-grade of parking. So we felt that kind of solved the basic needs for how the building functioned, where the retail and, and restaurant spaces would be, and how the traffic would flow in and out of the building. A little bit earlier, we handed out a package, which was more for your visual reference. I'm sure you all know the downtown, but what we tried to do is give you a little package that had visual aid of what's in the on-street right now. It's great. So as part of our discussions, as So as part of our discussions, us to what to do and how to make this building look and how to make it work with the rest of the downtown.
Sorry, I'm taking some notes.
Yeah. We, we did this little series of photographs. This being what the corner of Second and Main looked like currently. This is a little trip back down Memory Lane. This is where, before the buildings were removed from the site along Main Street. And if you kind of just thumb through this, you'll see all of the looks of all of the buildings that are along the street line and how we kind of captured what we were looking for. I'm going to hand this out as a supplement to this, just to give you... No, this is just a supplement to it. So our goal was to find elements on the street and the color and brickwork on the street in order to capture that and bring that into our design. Not sometimes as literal as it might be, but actually to take it and use that to help define what exactly the building should look like. So if you look at the cover of what we just gave you, I highlighted this, this little key point up here. And if you flip the page, you'll see the buildings that are on the east side of Main Street. And I highlighted here, you see that exact same format is on that building. If you flip the page, you'll see the buildings along the east side of Main Street, on the Foxes Building, and again, you'll see that same exact detail, although a little bit different, but the same exact format there. And if you flip the page one more time, you'll see a building just a little bit north of there on, on Main Street. And again, there's that little funky detail. So as we looked around to find an element that we could bring into the building, not all the buildings are all that architecturally of value, but they certainly all have some part of them that were of value to us in order to incorporate into the building. So as we went through and we laid out the building, we felt this little element had to be incorporated into the building. Again, not necessarily as literal as just being a flat plain with all these little scallops to it, but certainly something that we felt was important to incorporate. So as you see here, this and this is exactly that same detail, although we pronounced it a little bit differently, but to your eye, and you may not have even noticed all those little scallops at the tops of the buildings, but that is the most predominant element architecturally on the street. So now we've captured that, we've brought it to our building, we've created it and made it its own use, and we made it slightly different, but we kept the exact profile. So that, that is something that is elementary, the same as what's on the street and what has been on the street. So we felt that it was also important to look around and find how to bring the colors of the street in as well. So again, if you go to the second page, you'll see that there are several colors on the street that are on Main Street against the east side. There's a dark brick, there's a light tan brick, and then there's an orangey brick. And if you flip through the other, the other folders, you'll see that there's the dark red brick on the Foxes. There are the tan bricks also on the Second Street, on the Main Street side down on the east end. And the red brick is predominant there. So if you go to the last page of that new booklet that I gave you, you'll see that what we did was we went down the block and we picked the buildings that we felt were important. This is the building directly on the, on the corner of Main and Second on the east side of the street. So that is across from this corner. That's the brick color there, and that's the brick color we chose for our building as predominant brick color. The tans are really this coloring here, and although this got a little bit green in the copying, but again, this is the tan color of the buildings, three of them, that have that same color. They're a little greenier maybe, or a little beigeier there. Where we're going to get the new brick will be a little bit, a little bit more creamier to get that color. And then the orangey brick, again, exists in two other buildings on the street. And again, we've matched them to the physical buildings themselves so that this color here will match what's on the street. So elementary, what we've tried to do is gather not only the details from the street, but the colors from the street. The ornamentation is basically taken from several bits and pieces around the area. There are some big circles that are used as coins on the post office, on the corner of First and Main, and on the Presbyterian Church. All of the, all of the Presbyterian Church windows are all archtops. So we felt, again, that's a corner building, this is a corner building. So we gathered that in as well. And that's in the first package, if you want, you could take a look. You'll see the Presbyterian building. The details that are on the, on the buildings on the street, again, are somewhat de minimis, but in some cases, we felt that they were important to kind of highlight. So again, if you go back to the second sheet, you'll see that this building has doubled windows. So in some spots, we use double windows. Most of the windows are singled. So in other spots, we use the singled windows. The one building on Second Street, if you go back two more pages, although it's been a little bit more contemporized, which we like, had a fairly big crown or cornice to it. And again, we felt that that was important to capture, again, to, again, tie into the rest of the look on the street. So to the greatest extent possible, we used what was contextual value of the neighborhood and brought that to our building in order to make it fulfill what we felt was a building that would fit into the neighborhood and not just be a standalone building. It's contemporized. It doesn't have double hung windows. It has casement windows. So it is unique to itself, but it is contextually, we felt, part of what the environment was on the street and what we felt would be a deliberation of vocabulary for a new building and, and the Mineola downtown. So that was part of our goal to, to make work. The building itself does have a fifth floor rooftop, so we will have some ability to put flowers and things up there. So we tried to make that work and capture those pieces that, you know, again, if you look at the sawtooths that are on the tops of some of these buildings, we use those to be planting areas up on the top of the building as part of, you know, as part of the people that would be using it as part of their garden space up on the roof. The, the other thing that we did is on the lower portion here, where we have the, what we would consider the main restaurant space, it could be one or it could be two. We set that back, obviously, so that we had the ability to have a little bit of park space to the street. In, in our conversations, we talked about, you know, where would we get deliveries? Obviously, Main Street's a little tight. But on Second Street, on that end, in front of those buildings, there is a, there is a fire hydrant. It is striped out. Our concept was...
Can you show it on the site plan?
Yes, I can.
It's easier for everyone to see that.
So there's a, there's a fire hydrant right over here in this corner. There is a curb cut here. So right now, there is no parking in front of this, so it's not like we'd be changing anything. Our thought was that we would stripe that out and use it kind of as a loading zone so that, you know, the restaurants and some of the retail, there would be a spot for the trucks to stop, unload. This would be also access for like the UPS and the boxes and stuff to bring things and through the alleyway to the back of the lobby. We felt that was a good place because then that space virtually remains open ninety percent of the day and only would be used when there are, you know, loading zones, if we could work that out with the village. And we thought that would be an appropriate way to keep that space wide open and not just have people parking cars right in front of where the other people might be sitting for, you know, for lunch or for other things. So we thought that would be something we would like to talk about or, or ask the, the village if they would help us with. And that's really my presentation for the look of the building. I'd like to bring Noel Rogers up. He and I worked fairly diligently on this project. And he'll explain a little bit more about the layout of the floors and the nut and bolts of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrara.
No stranger to the microphone himself.
Don't like microphones too much. So Noel Rogers, I'm with CRCD, 155 First Street. Not too much to say after these two gentlemen, which is good enough for me. The building, first of all, is, is of non-combustible construction throughout. Like we're downtown, we opted not to go with wood. So I think that's, you know, a very acceptable comfort and sort of form of construction. Sal went over the parking. The idea on the ground floor parking in the back was to really just get cars in and not block the roads up that much, you know, just come in for a quick, do the shopping and whatnot and out, and with minimal impact on the area around. The residential parking is going to be more on the lower levels because it's, you know, the time, you know, the morning rush hour, evening rush hour. So it's more, more manageable and, and that. The building itself, it's, there's going to be a, we're considering a virtual doorman and virtual security system there so that, you know, you can, you know, fob yourself in and sort of take care of it from there. There's going to be a, there's going to be some personnel, like a houseman, a couple of housemen possibly, who are there looking after the building. Any kinds of maintenance issues that come up, like they're either on call or they'll be there during the day and whatnot. They will also be organizing the trash. You know, we have a, we have a trash chute and a trash room in one end of the building, which will get it down vertically. And then they will basically be in charge of taking that and then getting it over to the dumpster, which is on Main Street. We will have a, you know, we're very cognizant of recyclable requirements and whatnot, so we will be enforcing that as well, as opposed to just mixing everything together. I really don't have a whole lot more about the, the function of the building, you know? We, we talked about the sanitation and, you know, it's in sort of in, in early design stages, you know, how we're going to handle that, whether it's maybe the fillet sanitation or maybe private or however, you know, those are the logistics that we're working through.
It's going to be private.
So, yeah, I think that's...
Can you tell us, Mr. Rogers, about the breakdown? I know we have it here, but just for the public record, of the units, the number of units. So it's sixty-two units, but what is the breakdown? And give us a sense of the size of the units. And perhaps if you want to talk about any of the amenities or anything like that.
Right. We have, we have sixty-two units, as you said. We have forty-nine one bedrooms and thirteen two bedrooms. All the one bedrooms are seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet or greater. All the two bedrooms are, there's a few different sizes, but they range from like over a thousand square feet to eleven and, eleven and change. The two bedrooms are in prime locations on the corners. So, you know, we feel they use up the, the portions of the building pretty well. You know, we make use of corner windows and stuff to achieve that. We, the amenities in the building are really, as Kevin talked about, are on the upper floor. You know, in the top back part, we have the community room. But sort of more importantly, we have a gym up there, which we feel is going to be a great asset for, you know, for the residents, you know? People nowadays are very into health and whatnot.
Is there an outdoor portion of, will the residents have access to an outdoor patio outside the community room?
We, yes, we have rooftop patios. We have on the fourth floor and on the fifth floor, I believe. Just mixing my floors up. We have two, where's the best?
About the fifth.
Yeah.
So on the, if you can see this.
That's drawing A.
A one-four-zero. So by the community room, we have a terrace that's off that community space. And it's, it's sort of a nice area. It's set quite a bit back from Main Street. So it, it's a good outdoor, indoor potential up there, you know, to hang out and work out and, you know, hopefully have a good time up there. We also, on the floor below, we have balconies along the fifth floor units that face Main Street. Again, this, this whole portion of the building is set back about twenty-plus feet for all the reasons that we talked about earlier on, to, you know, lessen the vertical impact. And we feel this is a really nice amenity for these units. You know, it's going to make them very, you know, very desirable, you know? And we also have, let's see, really the community room is the biggest single. And, and we also have that little, what Sal had talked about and Kevin had talked about, you know, this area in front of the restaurant down there as well. So, you know, we get to feel that there'll be a lot of interaction with, you know, the tenants and the local stores and whatnot down there.
Can, can you talk, Mr. Rogers, about, and you could come back up to the microphone. I just want to make sure that everybody hears you. In relationship to the parking garage, just to the north of it, and in relationship to 120 Mineola Boulevard, which is to the northwest of it, how does this compare in height? So how, how tall is the parking garage, give or take?
The, we're, we're about, on the right-hand side, if you were on Main Street looking at the municipal lot, we're about approximately three feet lower than the, than the top of the municipal lot there.
Okay, at the front? No, at the rear.
At, at the front. If you were on...
Sorry, I'm just... I'm sorry, I'm sorry to jump behind you, but I wanted to give you the elevation that you can...
Really, what I'm referring to here is, is along Main Street. So we have the municipal lot here, and then our building starts. So right here, where I believe is about...
Okay, that, that, it's a few feet. So it's, it's a few feet lower...
Few feet lower, yes.
...than the existing municipal garage? Okay.
That's drawing A two-hundred, or you're looking...
It's about three and a half feet. Actually, you're drawing A two-hundred. You'll see the, and that basically continues, you know, right down, down the block. We have a couple ups and downs with some break in the, in the parapet design there, just to break it up a bit.
Okay. Thank you. Perhaps we can hear from Mr. Cody, perhaps about traffic.
Do you would like to hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cody, before he comes up.
I didn't want him to think that he came here for...
He, nobody minds, but that's fine. Can I just make, I want to make sure that you understand one thing because it is the truth. So I didn't tell you the, the way we, the corner on Main and, and Second, we've set back the fifth and sixth floor. That's why you have a little bit of balcony space on the fifth, and that's why you have the terrace on the top. The height-wise, I just want to make sure, and you can see it here, because I asked this question. This is, this top line is not the top line of apartments that all of a sudden there's something on top of it. This is actually the community space. It's, and, and the reason it's that way is because the elevator comes up closer to Main. We have to be able to get people down without walking outside because it's a community room and internal. So we had to run a corridor down there. So the first, if you look at your floor plan, the first part of that, that first along the strip is all...
Quarter.
Quarter, right, okay. Thank you, come on up.
For the record, my name is Keyan Cody. I'm with the firm of Robinson and Mueller Engineering. Our office is at fifty Elm Street in Huntington, New York. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, trustees. We were retained by the applicant to prepare an EIF and a traffic impact analysis. I did the traffic impact analysis, so I will go through that if you'd like. So as you've heard, it's a mixed-use building with sixty-two apartments, forty-nine one bedrooms and thirteen two bedrooms for seventy, seventy-five total bedrooms. There's then sixty-eight hundred square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. There are ninety-six parking spaces required for this project, where we are providing eighty-five. Twenty-two of those are at grade at the ground level and sixty-three are below. For the purposes of our analysis, we considered sort of those twenty-two at grade for those commercial uses and the remaining sixty-three below for residential purposes, just to split it up nicely. it up nicely. The site is considered a TOD, a Transit Oriented Development. Essentially, what all that means is it's a residential development within half a mile radius of major public transit hubs. In this case, there are two NICE bus lines in the area that have bus stops, both less than a quarter mile away, and then, of course, the Miniola Long Island Railroad is right there. We did a couple things. First, I'll touch on the parking. So we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the IT, and their Parking Generation Manual, and we use that to sort of estimate how much parking uses would generate in the future, and it does that by square footage or other independent variables. In this case, we used eight-twenty-two, which is like a strip retail plaza, it's sort of like a mixed-use retail building with restaurants to commercial uses. And then for the residential portion, we use land use code two-two-one, which is a mid-rise apartment building, which has units in it that could possibly have two or more bedrooms. It's not just exclusively one bedrooms. And essentially, what we did was we, using the rates provided by the IT, we calculated on a weekday what the peak parking demand would be, and on a Saturday what the peak parking demand would be, and a Saturday, we hit, I believe, eighty... We hit eighty-one vehicles parked, so four spaces vacant, and keep in mind, we also have the parking garage directed to the north, and then metered on-street parking all around that area. And then on the Saturday, we ended up with seventy-eight vehicles parked. So we do believe there is enough parking solely within the parking garages themselves. So even so, with all that excess parking, I know we have the garage, where you can see even from, you know, street views and aerials, that there's still parking at the roof and things like that during the day, and then the on-street metered parking, we don't think we'd really need to touch that too much. It's also a complimentary use, and what that means is residential uses and retail uses don't necessarily generate their peak parking at the same exact time. Retail is usually during the day, restaurants maybe a little bit later, but residential, it's always when everyone's sleeping, when everyone's parked, so that's overnight. So you won't get that peak parking demand of each use at the same time, so the numbers I gave you are assuming the worst case for each one. So in reality, it's probably gonna be lower than that. Also, this doesn't take into account any TOD elements, so you might get reduced parking as, you have commuter that commutes to Manhattan every day, doesn't necessarily need a car, can walk to everything in Miniola, or in a two-bedroom, you might only need one car instead of two for the, the group that's in there. So that sort of covers the parking. We do think there's adequate parking for the traffic. We did something similar, but in this case, we also studied the intersection of the parking garage, the existing parking garage at Main Street, just, uh, the parking garage at Main Street, and we used that to sort of evaluate the current traffic along Main Street. And essentially, what we found is Main Street isn't that busy. We looked at it during the AM commuter peak hour, so, and the most busy peak hour between seven AM and nine AM, the midday period, so that's eleven to three, and the most active hour in that timeframe, the PM commuter, which is four to six, the active hour in there, and then a Saturday midday, which is the same eleven to three period. And essentially, what we found was during the commuter time periods, that's when it's busiest, as you'd expect with the garage right there. But even then, you only had about two hundred vehicles on the road in an hour. Going back to that, we looked at state data. Now, I'm sure you're aware of the area. That Main Street used to run all the way down to Old Country Road. It has since, in twenty-twenty-two, yes, been cut off at the railroad, which means now you can't really use it as a cut-through. So for all intents and purposes, Main Street right now is about a three-block run in our section, where with Willis Avenue and Miniola Avenue to the, either side, you wouldn't really be going to Main Street unless you're going to something on Main Street. And, you know, even in our particular block, you're not gonna really be going through our particular block unless you're going to something on the block. So traffic-wise, there's not a lot of traffic flow on that road. We did same thing, we used the IT to figure out the traffic for the proposed project, and what we did with that was, we used the same land use codes, and we got, I believe, the peak was sixty-nine vehicle trips, I believe, and that's total between both the retail uses and the residential uses. And of course, the retail and the residential uses might not generate it at the same time and things like that. But we used that data along with the counts we had gotten, we projected volumes two years into the future, we used, you know, traffic engineering standards and the standard software, in this case, Synchro twelve, which follows the Highway Capacity Manual, and we essentially estimated what the delays would be at the two driveways and then the driveway with the parking garage. And what we essentially found was, two years in the future, and then the traffic from the proposed project on top of that, that there would be next to no delays still on the roadway. You have always stops on First and Second, you can't, you know, the blocks are only about a few hundred feet long, you can't really get up to any sort of speed, you can't really do anything besides, you know, turn into your use and be done. So traffic impact-wise, there's really not too much to speak of on the level of service. As Mr. Walsh had pointed out, we're all level service of A, and what that means essentially is, imagine you're taking an exam, you got an A, it's great, if you get a B, it's all right, C, so on and so forth, A just means the lowest level of delay. So in this case, I think we're seeing, you know, nine-point-six seconds to make the left out of the driveways, a few seconds to make the turn-in, and really no queue builds-up, build-ups at all. So traffic-wise, we found should be fine, shouldn't really notice anything, that road doesn't really get quite a lot of traffic anymore, and like I said, you're really only there to visit the uses there anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, and anything else, Mr. Walsh?
No, I just wanted to, just no more documents.
Sure.
So it's not part of the package we submitted, that's my neglect, but it is a, a site plan prepared by Combined Resources. It's dated, last dated, last revised, two-twelve-twenty-five. I'd like to put it in the record, if I could, and make one comment about it. So the site plan is in a, in a building where your setbacks are virtually zero, because you're permitted in the historic district not to have significant setbacks or any setbacks. Your floor plan is usually very much your site plan. So when I made and talked before, I was referring to the floor plan, which is, any of my testimony is equally applicable to the, I'm sorry, to the site plan. And that's it, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, I, I do appreciate that, 'cause that was one of my questions. So we do have the site plan. I do wanna make a comment about the wording on the site plan, where it says, "Community Park, one thousand square feet," and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. But first, I, I wanna say that clearly, and, and to Mr. Cody's presentation, first of all, thank you, that was very nice, and you seemed very passionate about it, and I'm sure a lot of people probably don't think your job is all that exciting, but hey, you know, I teach history, a lot of people don't think that's exciting either, so-
But important.
But important, and that's important as well. I will say this, that over the years, residents have a lot of complaints about downtown. One of them is not traffic, that's what we want. We want to generate traffic, not necessarily vehicle or traffic, but traffic, and, and I think that most people would agree with you, that right now, you know, Main Street, Second Street, First Street, getting through there is not a problem, and largely because we have a lot of empty space, this site being, being one of them. You know, the problems are more on Miniola Boulevard and Willis Avenue, Miniola and Second, Miniola and First are certainly problematic, we're working with the county to try to address that, but I don't think that this is going to be a problem for traffic on Main Street, on Second Street, on First Street. We could argue that it could add to those other intersections, but to your point, many of these people are probably gonna walk to the train station, and if they own a car, they're probably going to leave it, you know, in, in their parking spot under, below grade, so I, I don't think that traffic is, is going to be an issue here. I do wanna thank the developers for choosing Miniola, for working with us. I wanna thank Mr. Farrar for really listening to us, for reading the Historic Overlay District, taking those elements. And as you said, it's not that these, you know, we're, we're not talking about the, you know, the Parthenon or the Pantheon or the Colosseum in Rome, but it's our history, you know, and these are our elements, and these are our buildings down there, and I think that this board with the Historic Overlay District, you wanted to keep some of that, you know, whether people think that it's architecturally important or significant or not, we can certainly debate that, but those buildings on, on the east side do exist, and those elements do exist, and those colors and those materials do exist, and so we would like to have that kind of be the feel in this downtown. So I do thank you for taking that and, and incorporating it into the building. The building is a beautiful building, I think we, we can all agree, and we certainly have all heard from, from the community for many, many years, this corner is very important. It's a catalytic project for the downtown. This project is, as goes this project, I believe so goes the rest of this area down there. And, and so it's, it's important, but it's also important that we get it right. And to Mrs., Mr. Walsh's point earlier, and this is why, you know, this is perhaps slightly bigger, bigger mass, taller, more dense than we had envisioned with the Historic Overlay District, but we understand that developers also need to make it, you know, worthwhile for them, but we think that it's that important because there is other uses that would be permitted here. This could have been a hospital use, this could have been a hotel, this could have been any number of uses where you would have traffic coming and going every hour, appointments and, and certainly a lot more traffic that wouldn't necessarily shop here, eat here, live here, invest their time here. So I think that these uses, combined, retail, restaurant, and residential on that corner, I, I think can certainly work. It, it's not a massive building, it is keeping with the buildings just to the east of it, keeping to the buildings that are currently being built on the corner of First and Main, and the building that has been approved on Second Street as well. So it's, it's keeping with that style, that height, that, that density, and, and I think it fits in very, very light, nicely. It is unfortunate in some ways, but, you know, in, in, in some ways perhaps, it's, it's where we're meant to be, that a deal could not be worked out with the locksmith, but that's out of my control, and I know that your client did try for a very, very, very long time, but we're here now, and what we want is really to get this moving. We're waiting on Nassau County, so we won't be able to approve it tonight, but I also do wanna say that, and, and as I believe Mr. Eschagoff is, and Mr. Payk are, are well aware, we have the New York Forward Grant that we submitted to the state at the end of last year, in December. A large portion of the public project submission for that involved this exact area, it involved Second Street and Main Street, so when the time comes, if this is to be approved, that we coordinate that, because we certainly wouldn't want the developers wasting any time or money, and we certainly wouldn't want our part of the project to be a waste. So we, we, and I'm sure we'll, we'll communicate, so when, when it comes to, for example, talking about the streetscaping on Second Street, we'll coordinate that, you know, when, when the time comes, we'll coordinate that to make sure that it's uniform, because we're gonna be responsible for the rest of Second Street. To Mr. Farrar's point about that curb cut, we'll also then work that into our plan on Second Street and see how we can facilitate that. That eventually would be something that we would work out with the restaurant, when the restaurant, they would have to come before us for approval, we'd work out delivery times and pickup times and things like that, so, and I'm not saying that we would not allow loading, unloading on Second Street, because we allow that now, right, or whether we allow it or don't allow it, it happens, right? So we certainly would wanna mitigate it, but we would wanna control it so it's not, you know, in the middle of the day when people are going out for lunch, and, and so if we can control that. But that would be a conversation that we would have with that applicant when they came before us at that time. You know, to Mr. Farrar's point, and I made it clear, yeah, the garbage is gonna be private pickup, as it is the case now with every new application, but we just had two restaurants here last week, and that is the expectation, that it's going to be private Carter pickup, and that we can arrange obviously for, for a pickup, whether it's on Main Street or Second Street, you guys would work that out, would work out those times. I guess, Mr. Walsh, if you don't mind approaching there, if you could answer it, or perhaps Mr. Farrar or Mr. Rogers could answer it, how, how do we bifurcate the resident parking from the resident, from the commercial parking? So how do we know that, you know, Paul Pereira is going to dinner and he's not gonna park downstairs in Mr. Walsh's spot? Is there a key fob, is there a difference, or is it just first come, first served?
No, well, we, we plan, as was previously indicated, we plan on making certain that the people who park on the grade level offer the commercial use and the people that are residential. So the question on how to do that will be, is being, is being discussed, but we will make a point to make sure that happens. Obviously, you can put signs up, but I'm not sure how well that's gonna work, but we can, because you're gonna have to register your vehicle down below to park as a resident there. We can register the vehicles, and then our, our person that's monitoring the building can determine if he sees any vehicle with that plate in the first floor, and that can be part of the lease. You can't park on the grade level, you've got in a space below.
Right. And I do wanna also put that in the record, that as has been the case for the last ten or fifteen years, every application, that the parking spot is to be part of the lease and not in addition to the lease. In other words, we don't want to give someone the alternative that they can just buy a ninety-five dollar commuter parking pass and take up spots right next door, because there are some commuter parking spots there, for real commuter, you know, for our resident commuters, because those are really made for people who live up here, drive downtown, park their car, they pay for a commuter spot, and then they walk to the train. We certainly don't want someone who lives in the building. In other words, if the rent is three thousand dollars a month, it's three thousand dollars a month inclusive of the parking spot. Now, an additional parking spot, that's up to you, I, you know, but that has been the, the condition for every single multifamily application that we've had, and that is the expectation, because we don't want people, you know, people will look to save money where they can, and if you're gonna charge me two hundred dollars for a parking spot, I may look to find ways to, to mitigate that and, and find different parking. So I just wanna be clear that, again, that's nothing new, this is not, nothing owners that we're placing on the developer, this is the expectation. And I do agree with you, and our experience has been that not only with school-aged children, but also with parking, that one and a quarter is, is sufficient in a TOD development, not only within a half, a half a mile, this is within, you know, a tenth of a mile.
Yes.
So I, I certainly don't expect that parking will be an issue, and I don't want it to become an issue, because people are, in, in other words, I don't want your two below-grade levels to be empty-
Yes.
...and our streets to be clogged.
Understood. So that is a little more difficult, we're gonna give the spaces below, it'll be sixty-two units, sixty-two parking spaces assigned, one to each unit at a minimum.
Correct.
And it will be part of the lease and not an add-on.
Correct.
That's understood.
Yep, okay. Now, the, the conversation about the, what you call here the public community park-
Yeah.
-it is about forty-nine or fifty by twenty, so it's about a thousand square feet, which is smaller than this room. So, and, and I, I like your renderings, what we see there are some umbrellas and some seating, and that certainly looks like, and it walks like, and it talks like it belongs to the restaurant, and I'm okay with that. That, that's fine, that's great. I want people to frequent those restaurants, to sit outside when they're able to, that doesn't scream "park," it doesn't scream, you know, "public space," and again, that's okay, because we want this building to work for you, and we want it to work for us. I, I would want, you know, I can imagine somebody picking up a cup of coffee at Starbucks or at the panini place next door and sitting there, and then it becomes, whose responsibility is it? They trip and fall, they get hurt, I'd rather it be your responsibility, I, I, we don't have to call it a community park, people will sit there and hopefully frequent that restaurant or that establishment, and I think it is a nice visual, and it certainly does help the, the, the mass by throwing that back, you know? So I don't know if with this site plan, it makes a difference, but I just wanna be clear and on the record that those thousand square feet are yours, they're not a community park, but they are to remain open space, they are to remain for the restaurant or for whatever use you, you, you decide, but that that restaurant is, can encroach on there in terms of open space, right, in terms of an esplanade or in terms of outdoor seating, but I, I don't want this to be an invitation for the restaurant now to, to move up. I just wanna be clear on that.
Yeah. So, so we did not include any credit against any monetary contribution to the village, so we don't expect that, you know, your, your- So we don't expect that, you know, you're, you're getting it. However, your point is well taken. It will remain the way it, it appears. But I think my client would want me to indicate that if we move forward with this, that it can be, uh, uh, you know, we're a community ba-, we're going to be community supportive. So if some things come up along the way that it helps to use that area for something, I think my client would love a call and, and have that worked out.
Yeah, I, I mean, as, as was mentioned by Mr. Ferrara, we, we currently, we close down Second Street about five times a year, three times for concerts, and we have two, actually more than that. Um, and we're hoping that after this New York Forward application, it becomes a more regular occurrence. So another thing that I do want to mention is at one time, one iteration, had the park, had the, the ingress and egress of the parking on Second. And, and certainly that would complicate our vision for this. Because then people couldn't have access.
Yes.
To, to their apartment there. So I'm glad that it's on First. It makes sense there for all the reasons that were mentioned. It's next to the parking garage. First and Main is really where the traffic comes in from, not from Second and Main. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I do want to recognize that, uh, you heard us on many ways. You heard us on, on the aesthetics, you heard us on the layout, um, couldn't help you with the, with the locksmith. But, um, I'm glad that the parking is not on Second because then we wouldn't be able to close off the street. So we'll work with you as, as best we can, but we want to make sure that there is no, uh, element of bait and switch, for lack of a better word.
There, understood. The locksmith actually screams vintage Miniola too. So over the years, that's going to, it's going to probably look better and better is what we're trying to accomplish there.
We, we, we hope so. Um, so that, that's all my questions for now. I'll pass it over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, my question was the parking as well, just segregating. I'm sure you're working through it, segregating the commercial versus the residential. And even signage for people going to the commercial to know they can go in there. And it's not just for the building. So I'm sure you'll figure it out, but I think that's an important part. Um, I think, bravo, you did a wonderful job aesthetically. I love that you went through the downtown, you made it match what's going on down there. I love that it's set back at the higher levels so that from the front it's not massive and invasive. Um, looking at this rendering, it's so inviting. It really welcomes foot traffic and a community. And you know, sometimes we get slack over quote unquote allowing bigger buildings into our community. But this is the right place for it. This is really a cornerstone of our downtown. So allowing more mass down there is what we need and what we want. And we want to increase foot traffic there. So having a sense of community amongst the mass, if you will, is, is wonderful. It's exactly what we needed. So it's, you know, village, it's a village in a large way. But the minds of our residents is that it's a community. And all the things that we've been doing, like shutting down the streets and doing, um, parades and concerts and stuff down there, is just about us trying to increase the sense of community. And I think that this is going to do that. The way that the residential lines up with it, the way that you mimic the architecture, it's definitely creating that sense of community. So I really, really thank you on that thoughtfulness of it all. It's, it's going to be definitely a cornerstone of what's going on down there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I love the restaurants. I think they're great. That definitely does scream. I agree with the mayor. That does not scream park. It screams outdoor restaurant, which is great because I like eating outside. So it's wonderful. Um, thank you for working around that building. I think the locksmith fits well there. It does not look like a sore thumb, which was a concern at one point. Um, so I really do thank you. And the only thing I, I ask is when you, and the mayor alluded to this before, when you do start, there is another building happening not too far from there. There is the New York Forward Grant. So just work really closely with the building department on timing so that it doesn't become a cluster of chaos that affects our residents in general. Um, but I think it's wonderful. So thank you for finally, the burnt out building is gone and finally putting something that's a light in the area.
Thank you.
Trustee Casado?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Walsh, good evening. Nice to see you again.
You too, Trustee Casado.
So I, I love the look of this building. I love your concept of using matching bricks, matching colors. As the mayor and Deputy has stated, this is an important part of our downtown project. But I do have some questions. You know, I'm not a fan of below grade parking. Um, that's just my personal feeling. Um, how low is, is the lowest grade?
From grade, how deep have we got?
It's down 20 feet. Yeah, it's about 20 feet. It's a quadrants, you can refrigerate it until it cranes or it leaves its way down.
Yes, how far?
20 feet, 20 feet total from grade.
How 20?
20 feet total from grade.
Okay, right. Do you have charging stations of, in this garage?
No. No, we, uh...
We, we might have a grid.
Yeah, on the grid. We don't want to necessarily put it in the garage. So we want to keep it on grade where it's more.
Oh, that was my question. Could you?
There's a problem. They could be serviced or they could be, you know, if there was a fire, there would be a way of handling it where it's not buried in the ground or it can't get a, a fire truck to access.
Because I would love to see them, uh, uh, at grade level.
So if, to the extent we install them, we will put them at grade level.
Yeah. And Mr. Walsh, the last time you were here, the building you represented was all electric. Is this building going to be all electric as well? With the gas involved? It's all electric?
Yes.
I guess that's the thing now, everything's electric?
Yeah, it's.
It's going to become law.
More controllable. What?
It's supposed to become a mandate at one point. So.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
It's supposed to become a mandate from the state at one point. So build it that way.
About that?
It's cleaner here. I don't know what it's, where we're creating it, but here it's certainly cleaner.
Okay. Um, so some of my questions already, wait one second. Well, I do have a question concerning traffic, although I don't think that traffic is going to be an issue. Um, back in the summer of 2023, this ward voted on a four-story residential structure, housing development structure on the corner of, across the street from the post office, which is like one block north of you, yours.
Yes.
Did you consider those numbers when you did this traffic report?
Mr. Cody?
That's on the, uh, on the corner of First and Main on the southeast corner.
How southeast corner?
Um, we did not include any nearby planned projects.
Sorry, you did not?
Did not include any nearby planned projects, but we do have an ambient growth factor applied to the future condition. It's a few, you know, it increases the volumes to account for any sort of ambient traffic growth in the area.
Okay.
So, and, and I believe that that's the 30 some odd units, 40 units, 40 units.
If you were aware of that.
Uh, I also just like to point out, if it is like a block north of us, it shouldn't really affect all the traffic along our own driveways because most likely they'd be funneling east and west.
It's, it's actually going to be literally across the street.
Oh, all right, right.
Uh, from the garage. So it's, uh, construction's going on there now. But I, I mean, if Mr. Ferrara wants to speak to that, I think he also knows that project.
And the, uh, the entrance.
If, uh, Mr. Ferrara, if you could come up here.
You know, it's got the ground level parking.
He knows it well.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, that's where our office is, uh, in that building. And we designed that, uh, that particular structure. So that building is, uh, uh, on grade parking and it enters off of First Street. So there, it really doesn't have any effect to the Main Street or Second Street. Again, the, everybody in our building, we all enter from either Miniola Boulevard or Willis on First Street and use the parking lots there. Uh, some of our staff, as we use overflow, we are in the municipal lot by the ball field. So there's very little traffic that actually comes up Main or Second.
Okay, okay. I think that's, uh...
Thank you.
Just want, so how high is this, on Main Street? How high is this building as compared to the buildings that were there in the past? I'm just concerned about the shadow effect.
Uh, I know it, I know the heights, but I don't know relative to what was there.
Maybe, maybe what I should ask is, is there going to be a shadow effect of, of this building on Main Street? If you want, I could talk to that. Thank you.
Um, the, uh, the original buildings that were on the street that are no longer there, they were all two and a half story buildings.
Okay.
Um, they all had these little peak roofs and so on, so they were a little bit taller. So obviously in the late afternoon on a, you know, on a westerly sun, there will be a shadow on Main Street. The nice part about the way we've laid out the building is all the big pieces are in the back. So Second Street and the corner of Main and Second really will have sun on it all day long.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Again, great job, guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Trustee Clark?
Good evening. I just have a question on, uh, what's your, your schedule for shovel?
Well, it's the schedule that the, you're going to impose based upon the work that's being done. But we are, we are, we are pricing out the job now, hoping we get it, the approval. So we plan on moving ahead right away. So I don't know, can someone estimate the, the build time once we start? How many months? Okay.
In terms of general construction, the hard part of this site is that we have to build below grade first. So there's shoring and things. So this is probably a year and a half, uh, of construction in order to get the building open. And I think that's, that's an, an appropriate number just to do from time that we get our approvals and can put shovel in the ground.
We save time on demolition.
That's true.
Um, yes, that certainly is a concern of the board is that, um, you know, and some things are, are out of our control. But it does certainly seem that things are not happening as fast as, as we'd like them to. Now reiterate, not to put any pressure on the developers, that this is an important, very, very important. I, I, you know, when we met with the state to get the $4.5 million grant from the state, this was a key component of it. This was, you know, you can't ignore it. It's, it's an important part of the downtown. So we, we will do what we can to facilitate. And we obviously, uh, would ask that the developer do what they can, the developers do what they can on their end to, you know, expedite it as well. Because we, we don't, we also don't want to have continuous construction, you know. For, you, we just went through three years of third track construction. Um, we have the building on the, uh, corner there that was just mentioned. We have another building that's about to break ground behind Fox's. Um, but I did want to mention before I handed over, uh, to Trustee Clark that, um, right on First Street, 190, uh, mill, uh, 191st Street's called the Boulevard Towers, right? That was built in the 60s. That is actually six stories high. Um, and, um, it's been there for, you know, so thi- this is in, to, to answer Mr. Casado's, uh, question about, does it fit in with, with this other area? It does. And I, I do want to recognize that, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Ferrara, Mr. Rogers bringing in, you know, the elements from the post office, the elements from the Presbyterian Church and, and the other buildings. As I've, uh, told many people, the building directly across the street on Main Street is where my family and I first moved to, uh, the, the apartment right above the nail salon. That's where we lived from 1977 to 1979. So I know this well. And I, I remember, and I had friends who lived across the street in the building that was destroyed in the fire. So I know this area well. I know Mr. Casado remembers the fire next to the post office in the late 70s where now you have the condominium complex. Um, so as much as the downtown has changed, in a lot of ways it hasn't. And this building, uh, keeps that, uh, tradition, I think. Uh, Mr. Clark, anything else?
No, that's it for now. Thank you.
Trustee Salas?
I just have a few things. The building is absolutely beautiful. Uh, I think you guys did a terrific job. It's going to, if approved, it is going to be beautiful. Just a couple of things. On where you have the community park, running along the restaurant and that existing one story, that's going to be an alleyway?
Yes.
So, Sal, can you step up the site plan and just so we have it clear?
So what we left is a five-foot walkway through here. So it will be a lit walkway. So you could access the parking or access the building or the people from the building can come out and access Se- Second Street without walking all the way around. So we felt that was an important element to keep so that the access pedestrian-wise worked well. And as we had proposed, that would also be a good area for some of the services to be brought in rather than having, you know, the UPS trucks on, uh, on Main Street. They can, you know, park here and bring some stuff in. So we thought that had a, a good amount of use and in terms of, uh, flow of the pedestrians and the tenants of the building to access the other restaurants on Second Street.
Okay. And then on, um, A140, you have a kitchenette. What, what is that going to consist of?
So this is the rooftop space.
Right.
This is a, a community room.
Mm-hmm.
So in the community room, um, you know, it will be for the residents of the building. If they were having a party, this would be a counter with a sink where they can put stuff. There'll be a refrigerator so that if you're having a party, you have a place in which, in order to deliberate, um, either the food, food or cake or whatever you're serving. It's not a cooking source.
That's really my main point. You don't foresee a stove or an oven in there?
No, no, no.
Okay. And then the terrace?
Yep.
Uh, grilling allowed up there?
Um, I would say we probably would. Uh, we've been up to the morgue and they have a, uh, nice little outdoor space. There's a barbecue up there. Um, we would see that as being part of what would be a community space. So if you're having a party, it could be either indoor or outdoor. Um, but again, it would be a single grill. It wouldn't be a, you know, a, you know, a, an esplanade filled with grill stations and fryers and things like that.
Okay, but you, you see yourself having propane tanks up there?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I, uh, one thing I wanted to make clear. And then you mentioned having someone on duty in case there are repairs. Is that a 24-hour position or will that only be during specific hours of the day?
The, uh, the owners of the building, they, the owners of the building have a maintenance company. They, I don't know, how many buildings do you guys have right now on the island? Three. So they have people that are, are maintenance people that service their buildings. So this would not be a person that necessarily would be on site 24/7, but would be a call-in position when there is, uh, something to be had.
Okay, that's was my, I believe my last question. Just give me one minute. Oh, and regarding trash, where do you see the dumpster being in that plant?
Actually, we already have that planned. We didn't really go over it. But if you look on drawing, uh, A110.
A110?
Right.
Okay, got it.
So, uh, we have our trash room in the back here.
Right, I saw the trash room.
So that's the resident, but the actual trash containers will be here. So those same maintenance people will be responsible for collecting the trash and bringing it up here on the street for the days that garbage pickup would be had. And then the garbage trucks would back up on the street here and take the garbage out to the trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And if you look on it on the elevation, um, the elevation would show you, uh, this location here is actually where the trash would be. Uh, that's really the, the main holding space for where the, the trash containers were being, again. It's the furthest away from the retail space.
Right.
It is between the driveways where we felt there wouldn't be a lot of foot traffic. And that was the, the best place to put it so that, uh, that material is kept there. The main trash room, which has the chutes coming down from upstairs, that will be a refrigerated room so that the trash that's being held there, that's over or under the basic space of residents, would be in a, um, in a situation where it's not going to smell on a hot day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else, Trustee Salas?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't have a question. I just have a comment as Mr. Ferrara was presenting. And I think that that alleyway that connects Second Street to the parking is a great idea. Only made greater if we put some kind of gate there so as not to give people access. Because we are in the downtown, we are by a major hospital, we are by a train station. So in, when the restaurant closes, they close that, that alleyway. We certainly do not want people who do not belong there to have unfettered access, you know. I'm sure you don't want that either. So we'd really, a nice looking gate, you know, um, wrought iron or something like that that, uh, would close that off at a certain time and it wouldn't be open until a certain time. But then that brings me to the entrance to the parking. Will that be in any way or will it just be open? You know, will people be able to, you know, hang out? Because it's, it's, it's at, uh, grade. Um, will people be able to hang out there overnight when it's cold? Or will there be some way, um, to gate that or close that or secure that in the overnight hours? Because in the, in the, you know, and many of these buildings have gates that open with a key fob or something like that. I know that this can't really be done because you, you, you have customers to the retail. But at a certain point, uh, I don't know if it's midnight or, or one in the morning, nobody's, you know, going to the restaurant anymore. you know, going to the restaurant anymore. Do we secure that? And how do we secure that? Something to think about. You don't have to answer that today, but I think just for the safety of your residents, you don't want people wandering, because yes, they're in, in a parking garage, but then that gives them access to those 63 cars down below. So how do we protect that? And most of all, that alleyway, I don't want it to be an invitation for, you know, illegal activity. Currently, the Panini place, I believe, is open 24 hours, right? The Panini place is open 24 hours. We don't want that to be an invitation for people to go, you know, eat or do anything or throw garbage or worse in, in that alley. So if we could secure that alleyway, at the very least, and I would say that for your own benefit, you know, secure the, the entrance and the exit to the parking overnight somehow.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions? Mr. Gibbons, anything?
No questions, Mayor.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? No? Okay. So anything else, Mr. Walsh?
Nothing.
No? Again, thank you. Long time coming. I think the consensus is that we love it. We cannot vote on it tonight, as you heard, because of Nassau County Planning Commission. Hopefully, they will address whatever concerns, it's not even concerns that they had. They asked for additional information. We'll provide that, you'll provide that information. So hopefully, as soon as they give us the go-ahead, we'll be able to vote. So I would like a motion to continue the hearing until the next hearing day in April, at which point we should have what we need from the Nassau County Planning Commission.
Motion.
Motion by Deputy Minister Artori. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Casado. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yep.
Mayor, will that be a date? Have you named it a date, sir, so that we don't have to do new notices? Because.
April 9th, April 9th. So motion continued to April 9th.
Thank you.
Okay? And, and I, Mr. Gibbons, will they even have to come back at that?
No, absent any comment by the Nassau County Planning Commission, you don't need[1749.04]